We don't have one. All right. Are there any citizens' concerns tonight? No? Well, pending the weather, tomorrow night, we have a special town meeting. December 10th, we have another town meeting, and there'll be twin schools, the fire station in West Acton. And then, December 17th, we have to go to the polls and vote to exclude the debt. Anything, John?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to call everyone's attention to the municipal monthly that we published yesterday. It's 14 pages of information about what's going on in town. It includes some information about the town meetings and town elections you just mentioned. I also like to call special attention to three surveys that are we've published as an organization, and there are links to those surveys right on the front page of the document.
Does that include West Acton Citizens Library?
It's, yeah, the Town Meeting Improvement Committee has a survey out, the West Acton Library has a survey out, and the Housing Production Plan includes a survey. I also want to take the opportunity to mention that our Public Works folks did a great job. They came in last night around 11 o'clock and worked all day, and they're probably still working right now, and the roads look great, so thanks for allowing us to work today and have a meeting tonight, and nice job.
One comment, just to follow up on one point on John's comments. If the Town Meeting Improvement Committee survey is on the town website, and if each of you could take the time, and any, and those in the audience who live in town, take the time to fill it out. It's a very comprehensive, thoughtful survey, and Mark has done a really good job at getting it out well beyond the town website and within reach of the entire community, and I just hope that citizens take the time to fill it out and fully respond. Thank you.
Well, we have a few minutes before the special permit. Let's do the consent items. 10, approved meeting minutes, November 12th and 18, 2019. 11, approved executive session minutes, November 18th, 2019. 12, appoint Joan Rubin Deutsch as a full member of the Acton Boxboro Cultural Council. Term to expire June 30th, 2022. 13, approve a one-day alcoholic beverage license, Theater 3, December 6th through 8, and 13 through 15, 2019. Is there a motion?
Can I, can I hold? Whoops. Was it number 12, meeting minutes? I just had a question about minutes, yeah. You want me to go through that now?
Sure.
Okay, I'm looking at the minutes of November 12th, which was the tri-board meeting. I'm looking at the Minuteman discussion. The numbers in here didn't seem right to me. There was a delay in the issuance of the shared numbers of Minuteman Tech due to changing composition of the towns and the district in fiscal 19th. That number was 300 grand. Fiscal 20 was 348. Fiscal 21 will be 424. That's not the number that we're asking to be excluded from the debt, I assume. That's the payments on the interest, those numbers, as opposed to the actual what's the number that we're asking to be excluded from the debt that Minuteman is assessing us?
So, yeah, that's correct. The numbers that you just referenced were the actual debt service payments that we've been paying over the last few years. The number for the total amount that we expect to pay is between $10 and $12 million, and that number will be finalized once the final borrowing is completed.
Okay.
But it's, we expect it to be 480 next year, or the coming year, and it'll go up a little bit more going forward.
So what will the actual, I gotta admit, I haven't looked at the ballot.
The ballot does not have a dollar figure.
Doesn't have a number.
Yeah, it's, I think the important thing with the Minuteman debt is what we're what we're asking the citizens to exclude, to exempt from the provisions of two and a half is the town's allocable share of the Minuteman debt from year to year. What we've been paying are just interest loans, construction loans that were taken out, and we haven't gone to a final. The district hasn't gone to a final bond yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, move that we approve consent items 10 through 13 inclusive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is this one of these that will take five minutes, John?
Do you expect the item number seven, the request for installing two new streetlights, to have a lot of discussion?
Two new streetlights. High Street and Adeline Way Utility Pole Number VZ68, and Maple Street Pole Number 33/9, opposite the Gordon Richards Commuter Parking Lot. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question. Why do we have a streetlight moratorium?
Director Corey York is here to provide input on that question. Thanks, Corey.
I could, I could speak to that because the moratorium predates Corey's tenure here with the town. Almost predates my tenure here with the town.
Stone Age.
Stone Age, yeah. We used whale oil back then. There was a moratorium that was put in place on new streetlight installations probably close to 30 years ago. Prior to that, there was a street lighting committee that that reviewed all these items and got approved without the input from the selectmen. Long fixed cost items, so that realized it just kept going up and up. And a board of selectmen about 30 years ago put in this moratorium and said that the board of selectmen have to vote on each and every application. So it's, it's historic. It does some of the requests in the past, I think, were trifle frivolous because you'd have somebody who had kids that wanted to play basketball in the street, and parents would ask for a street light, and the committee would approve it, and then the kids would move off, and we'd still have a street light, and it was costing us, yeah, at that point, several hundred dollars a year for each streetlight, so it's a, it was a cost containment matter.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
The Community Preservation Committee also, or no, I'm sorry, the Green Communities Funding paid to replace all the streetlights, make them LED lights, which considerably cut down the cost, I think, of the streetlights. But I thought, I remembered when we were doing that, we went through all the streetlights in town, and didn't we cut out a lot of streetlights that were, didn't we have a standard kind of, had to be near an intersection or something, and whatever? Not that it matters with these, but I thought we eliminated a lot of streetlights when we did that.
My recollection is, I don't think we actually eliminated any of them. It was more some guidance was set up going forward. But we did, we went to LED, and prior to that, we went with the high-pressure sodium, so we've gone through several iterations of energy conservation, but I, other than one or two, I don't recall that any actually were uninstalled.
So is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the two new streetlights.
Is there a motion made and seconded? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Special permit number 103119, 47771 Hosma Street. Is there someone here to speak to this?
We have staff from planning available to answer any questions. Do we expect the applicant to be here?
Okay, we're gonna hold on that. Let's review the CPA applications.
So the list provided, we received, we sent, we put in the packet, these are all the applications that are from town committees or departments, and it's been the past practice for the board to review these
Okay.
to provide feedback to the CPC.
Town of Acton Open Space Committee. Set aside funds, $400,000. Town of Acton ACHC Community Housing Program Fund, $100,000. Town of Acton Planning Division Housing Services, $65,000.
I had a question about that. It seems kind of high. We do this, we've been doing this on a two-year this is to fund two years of the housing services program? I think that that number has gone up considerably, but it may be because of, we have more units, or they're doing more work, or whatever, but.
We propose to increase the scope slightly, yes, of the housing services, and we do have more units that they're helping us oversee, and more in the pipeline.
Do you know if that's a two-year thing, because that's what we've done in the past?
That is a two-year request.
Town of Acton Highway Department Restoration of Historic Streetscapes, $15,000. Town of Acton Municipal Properties Repointing and Chimney Restoration of the 1889 Acton Memorial Library, $70,000. Town of Acton Municipal Properties Isaac Davis Monument Repointing Restoration, $77-
I had, oh, I'm sorry.
Which one?
A question about the Davis Monument, which is $77,000. I think the CPC paid to do that, maybe when we first started in 2002, or the early years of the CPC?
Yes, it was, it was done. I think it was a little bit more than 10 years ago. I was frankly surprised to see this come back that quickly, and I've not had the opportunity to go out there and take a look at the monument itself. I'm puzzled to think that that it's gone downhill that quickly, and if it has, then it's, this is more of a maintenance item rather than a restoration item. So I, I think that certainly that's, that raised a big red flag for me. I think the committee is going to have to do some, some serious work on that to see if it's, if it's really necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Town of Acton Land Use Department, East Acton Village Green, $49,802. Town of Acton 53 River Street Master Plan Committee Historic Pot, $96,966,000.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I have, I am the liaison to the 53 River Street Master Plan Steering Committee. We got a, as, as most people know, when we started meeting, we discovered that the state wasn't aware even that the dam existed on the mill site at 53 River Street. When the state found out it was there, it hadn't been on their maps, they had some consultants evaluate the stability of the dam. They found it was unstable and needed to be taken down. We're under orders to come up with an emergency response plan by the end of this year, and a plan to repair it by the end of next year. We, we put out a request for proposals to consultants to give us a number and a scope of services for breaching the dam. Restoring it is not feasible, given the costs and the condition of the dam, so we're looking at breaching it. It's quite a big number, $966,000. That, that included a whole study about how it would affect downriver flooding if, if the dam was breached. Seems to be doable, actually, maybe improve some of the water issues downstream. But we got this proposal in about a week before the CPC money was supposed to be, or the CPC proposals were supposed to be put in. So we put in for the full $966,000. That's unrealistic to me, given the amount of money the CPC has, maybe a million, one or two, something like that, and the other proposals that are before it. So I've talked to the town manager. We're probably going to amend this to try to do it in phases, which, which the proposal really talks about anyway, a design, other work in the area of $300,000, so I think we'll be moving forward to bring that number down considerably.
Town of Acton Rec Department Narrow Sports Pavilion Phase 2, $400,000. Town of Acton.
Just to hold on, on the narrow sports, could, somebody just offer an explanation of Phase 2 and $400,000?
When the project was initially proposed to the Community Preservation Commission, I believe, committee, I believe it was a $650,000 project, and at the time, the committee approved about half of that to do the work. And we've worked within that appropriation and various other sources of funding to do part of the project. And this request is to just complete the entire project, which would be to have two buildings, a bathroom facility,
Oh.
and, and an accessory structure for.
That's by the, by the Merkel Field.
Yep. You'll, if you've been out there recently, you'll see the concrete pad,
Yeah.
and we have two new metal roofs on those structures, so we're making a lot of progress, and, and this request is just for the final investment needed to finish the project.
Fair, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Speaking, I've, I've got comments on a number of these, but specifically talking about that one, I think there's a concern on the part of the Community Preservation Committee that natural resources/recreation has a lot on their plate. Have a lot of work that's not been completed for projects that have been fully funded. It's Project Jones Field that they got about a quarter of a million dollars for last year, that nothing's happened on. There were supposed to be some restrooms near the picnic pavilion, which, at Narrow Park, which progress has not been made on it. Skateboard Park was funded, and that's been delayed for two or three years. And I think there's a real concern on the part of, of the committee. And some prejudice against funding this, based on the track record. I think the committee is probably going to be in favor of of not approving some of these just because we're not sure that they're going to get done in a timely fashion. And I don't know if the town manager wants to comment on that or not.
Yes, I've actually worked very closely with Land Use and on that very issue. And I think we've made substantial progress over the last year on many of the initiatives that we're sort of moving along. And I think that we intend to continue making progress over the next few months, hopefully before the CPC makes a decision to demonstrate that the investment would be used in a timely manner if it's, if it's approved. But yes, there are multiple projects, and we're, we're working very hard to keep them all moving in the right direction.
Okay, Town of Acton Recreation Department and Friends of Gardner Field. Gardner Field and Playground Master Plan Phase 1, $30,000. Town of Acton Manager, 5% Administrative Support Letter, $58,000, almost $59,000. Bettina Norton, James A. Norton, Alberitem, $19,180.51. Acton Housing Authority, Main Street Development, $500,000.
Thank you. If I could just talk about the process here. We used to actually rate these town proposals. The CPC does like to have an idea about which one the selectmen consider top, top, higher priorities, I guess. But as it turned out, we would rate them at the beginning of the process, and then some of them would fall out, or change, or whatever. So at this point, I think what we've been doing is only considering whether or not there are certain of these proposals that we might not support for whatever reason, or any alternative authorize all of them to move forward. And as, as a CPC gets closer to making a decision next, after the beginning of the year, we come back with the proposals that still exist and, and ask this board to rate them in terms of priority.
Okay. Mr. John?
Yeah, just a, a que, um, is this a complete list of the project applications for coming year?
Yes, that, that is, the, the complete list is before you.
Okay.
The, and it's, I mean, this, this year is, is unusual from the years that I've been on CPC, in that the, the total number of requests, the dollar number so far exceeds what we have available. We've got $2,700,000 in requests and about $1,275,000 that can be allocated. So these will certainly be exposed to some extreme scrutiny. So I think it's, I, I'm respectful of the comments that Selecton Berry made, and I think it's important that we, that we vet these things early on, just from a point of view of credibility on the part of the board. Thank you.
David?
Yeah, just two questions. These are just the projects that the town is involved in, right? Are there others that the town is not involved in?
There, the, the bottom two on the list, the Bettina Norton
I understand.
and the Housing Authority are both not town projects. This year was unusual in that there were no other applications from private organizations, Historical Society, or and we thought we had a couple of others coming in from the school district, which it didn't come in. So it's basically almost all of our ask, other than a substantial amount from the Housing Authority.
And it's, it's normal CPC practice, right, to, if they wish, to, they often fund them at less than the requested amount. Is that, isn't that right?
Yes, and one of the points that came up at our meeting last week was we have a liaison appointed from the committee to each one of these projects. They go back to the applicants and say, what's the, the minimum amount that you can actually do something with? You know, for instance, the, the River Street project, if, if the ask is $900,000, it's probably not going to do you any good if we say, well, we'll give you $50,000. You need to know what, what can actually do some good. But certainly, some of these will be cut back, and probably some of them are going to be disapproved entirely.
Thank you.
So do we have to vote on this, or just say we pass them along?
I, I had spoken with the CPC, the meeting last week, and I said that we were going to be talking about this, and that we'd have some indication as to certainly support from, or lack of support from the board for these projects. And I had thought that we were going to, you know, give some kind of a rating, but I suppose based on previous experiences, maybe that's not necessary. Certainly, if anybody has any strong feelings one way or about, or another about any particular projects, I can bring that back to the committee. I've certainly got, you know, my favorites.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with rating them, if that's what the committee would, would like us to do. What we did in the past was just go down the list and assign 5, 4, 3, 2, 1 to each one of, of the projects, and whatever came out with the highest number was a top priority, and whatever came out with the lowest number was the lowest. If you reduce, and these are just rough numbers, but if you reduce the 53 River Street project down to $300,000, that, that frees up about 6.6K, which would bring the total number down to about $2,100,000, which is still close to a million bucks over what's available, so there'll be some tough choices to make. I don't particularly see anything on the list that would jump out to me as being objectionable, or saying that it shouldn't move forward. or saying that it shouldn't move forward. But again, I'm happy to listen to what other people say, and I'm happy to, if you think that we should rate them, that's okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Where is the James Norton Arboretum?
That's a parcel of land up beyond Narrow Park, off Quarry Road. It's, the parcel is owned now by the Norton family, and they propose to, they've already started work on it, a small arboretum and some kiosks to explain some of the history of the area. It's not presently town-owned, man, but presumably it would at some point be turned over to the town. This is one in particular that the CPC has asked for legal review, just to make sure that, you know, it's an appropriate project from a legal vetting point of view.
And what, East Acton Village Green?
That is a small proposed park at the intersection of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and Concord Road.
Okay.
And it would be a connection to the new Ice House Pond Public Park feature. And it's something that, there's some support from the Friends of Bruce Freeman, would also be providing some matching funds and some other community partners. It's something that was actually planned, and I think actually funding was awarded for it about 10 years ago, but the community, we decided to hold off on the project until the rail trail project was completed. And so now that the rail trail project is completed, this project is back for reconsideration.
Well, the, just for whatever it's worth, I kind of went through these and found some of the projects that I thought were particularly noteworthy and should be approved and backed. So I'll kind of run through my list quickly. First off, the easy one is the CPA Administrative Support at $58,000. That represents costs that are absorbed by Town Hall staff, Planning Department and Finance Department specifically. And that amount is actually the maximum that's allowed under the law, although it does not match what the town actually puts into it. Next one that I rate very highly is the restoration of Historic Streetscapes. This is a follow-along project for some tree planting in the historic districts. I think it's noteworthy that it fulfills the goal that the Board of Selectmen set up at our meeting in May or June to try to do some more tree planting. That's really a very modest amount of money. Housing Services, again, that's a routine sort of thing, and they're certainly getting a lot more work to do. The open space is important. The minimum allotment under the law would actually be about $125,000, but we always far exceed that. The Village Green project is certainly worthwhile because there is a significant amount of public input and funding available for that. Gardner Field, I'd rate highly because there's a very engaged citizen group involved with that. 53 River Street, now that's been cut way back in size, certainly looks like a good idea. And although, those are the ones that I consider to be the most worthy of the projects. That's just my own personal opinion. Also, I'll note, although it's not a town project, the $500,000 for the Main Street Development is certainly important. That $500,000 would leverage $15 million in construction funds, and it would help to get us closer to our 10%. So I think it's important, whatever we favor, to make sure that there's still some room left for that $500,000 that can go to the Housing Authority. Thank you.
Peter?
Do you know what the open space set aside is? No?
I do not, but I, no, I'm getting...
David? You mean, what's currently in the fund?
Right.
I think it's over $2 million in the fund, maybe even 2.4. It just sticks in my mind. I wouldn't absolutely swear to that. But, you know, it's a little bit of a conundrum in that that's a good deal of money that's in the fund currently, but the properties that they might buy for open space are also expensive, right? It's, so it seems like a lot of money. It isn't a lot of money, but, you know, when you go to buy open space, it's a lot of money.
There is an automatic payment every year for the bonding that we did for Wright Hill purchase, which I think is about 55 grand in interest and principal payment a year for open space. That's not on this list, but just built into the yearly expenditures.
So do you want to make a motion on those seven? That those would be priorities?
I would move...
John? Wait a minute.
I just would offer to provide additional information on all of the projects if that would be helpful.
David?
I would be interested in knowing, for example, you know, we discussed earlier the Davis Monument. Is that really in need, or is, you know, what is that? Is that in maintenance or in need? I'd be interested in knowing that. You know, I'd be interested in knowing about the repointing of the chimney on the library. You know, I'm sure the committee themselves is going to look into these things, but it's a matter of us to prioritize them. I'd be interested in knowing that as well.
I can speak a little bit to the Memorial Library project, just from my previous employment. We did do some repointing on the 1889 wing of the building. My recollection is it was about 25 years ago. We also reconstructed part of the chimney, which was probably closer to 30 years ago. I don't know what the condition is right now, but it's a considerable length of time, and the repointing that was done on the 1889 was just little individual patches. So it might very well be that there's more work that needs to be done. As for the Davis Monument, we did the work, say, 10 or 15 years ago, and it was, it'd probably been 50 years since it was done last. So that's why I'm surprised that this came back so quickly. The monument is a little bit different in that it's actually hollow, so if water intrudes into those seams, it doesn't build up and cause instability in the monument itself, unlike the library, where the water can filter in through those voids and actually start to spoil the bricks. So just based on that, without even looking at them, I would think that there might be a better argument to be made regarding the library than the monument, but we could certainly hear from the manager and from the municipal properties superintendent about that.
Well, there was a leak in there because you couldn't use the elevator.
Yes, that, the leak there had, was not in the area that would be repointed. It was quite some distance away, so that, not related.
Yes, I think that these projects are historic preservation projects. I think that there was work that's been completed on both the library and the monument, but they are priority needs. I think there are portions that we could defer, but I think that we used a drone and went up and looked at the monument and found areas that needed to be addressed. We've got quotes. We're also seeking a grant to offset the cost through something that James McCray is helping us out with, for the Isaac Davis one. For the Memorial Library one, that's an historic building, and we try to assign funding within the operating budget to help with maintenance of historic buildings, but we're fortunate to have the CPA as an option where we can do a more comprehensive rehab and really get the building all shored up, and that's the goal of the effort. But we could provide additional details and photographs and things like that if that's helpful.
Now, when will they be making decisions, Peter?
Yeah, we're going to be having hearings on these over the next, going to be having hearings in December and right through the end of January. And the, our objective would be to have final decisions made by the end of February.
But if we want to have input onto this, if we wait until our next meeting?
I would think that that would certainly give the manager an opportunity to provide some more information.
Peter?
That's fine. Dean thinks that's appropriate, and then we can make that decision then.
I had a question. The 1.275 million in funds that are available, is that our allocation for this year?
Yes.
Are there any funds that are in reserve, that haven't, unused funds from prior years that may be added to the mix?
I believe there is one project that did not get off the ground and expired. That money should be coming back. I think that's like $30,000. It's a pretty modest amount. Getting a nod from Robert, so...
So the whole bank of money is made up of the state surcharges, the local surcharge, recaptures, which are projects that have been done, or if I have a project with, let's say, a project of $30,000 and I have over $1,000 left, then the CPC wants to take that money back and put it back into the pot. In some cases, when we don't have a 10% of historic community housing or open space, then the money must go into the set aside. So it gets a little complicated, but I think we're going to look at like 1.3, 1.2 million for this year.
At our April town meeting earlier this year, in authorizing the go-ahead for the 31 senior and disabled affordable units, in adopting that, we did commit, I think, tacitly to a $500,000 appropriation from the town, didn't we?
That was in the pro forma, if I remember, yeah.
Yeah.
For funding the thing, yeah. But tacitly, right. Can't commit to actually appropriating the money, but...
All right. We'll wait till our next meeting for a final recommendation. Is there anyone here from the motel?
The applicant talked to Robert, and they're actually held up out of town, not held up, but unavailable out of town. So we did provide substantial comments in the packet from different staff, but the board does have the opportunity to continue this to, it would have to be to a date certain, I would believe, so we have to pick either the next meeting...
Yeah, let's do the next meeting.
So that would be the 16th or the 17th? 16th?
We know that the 17th is a Tuesday.
We do. We do.
Yeah, because then we can get a budget.
So should we, is that, does that require a motion, or just continue it?
I think that probably does, yeah. Continue the hearing until the 16th.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Budget. Then we can all get out before we're iced in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can see it. I can see the holes in it.
Plug them now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Manager, I'm the town manager, pleased to be here tonight to present all the work that we've done over the last few months to prepare a municipal operating budget for fiscal year 2021. We have some members of our team here tonight, but it's been really a team effort. Steve Barrett's here, Mark Holt's here, Corey York. All of the departments really, we did a lot of work to try to bring this forward in a very busy budget season, so... And there's the Isaac Davis Monument we were just, we're talking about. So before I get into the budget, I think it's important to take a minute and look at some of the great work that the organization's doing. And this is just a slide or two, but we could go on for hours, what's been happening here. There's a lot of exciting things happening in town. Our AAA bond ratings were reaffirmed this year due to our strong financial planning. The great support shown by Town Meeting in April helped convince the state to take over the cost of the design for the Kelly's Corner design. That's a huge deal that really helped us, provides some flexibility for us going forward. We finalized the acquisition of a new parking lot next to the T, which were 19 Maple Street, which is going to provide more opportunities to help us with our parking constraints. Our library next door, they're circulating a half a million items a year. That's a lot of, a lot of materials moving in and out, and they have over, almost a quarter million visitors every year. So it's a very busy building, a part of our historic complex here. We held our first Restaurant Week in September, which I think was a great, great event, where a lot of people really saw restaurants that they hadn't been to in a while or hadn't ever been to, and we got some great feedback on that. Our Nathaniel Allen recreational area turned 20 this year. It's a big amenity for this community and for the region, and we're really excited to continue working out there. Some of you may have noticed the new charging station we have out at Town Hall. We just received the grant thanks to Corey's hard work. We're going to put another one in the back parking lot over way behind Asa Parland, so we'll have additional charging stations for us, hopefully this spring. We established a regional veterans' district. We took Jim McCray, our All-Star Veterans Officer, and we're having him work in Box Square, too, and it's been a great partnership. They're offsetting some of our costs, and we're helping veterans in a larger area. Our police department does a great job, and they were recognized by the Mass Police Accreditation Commission this year. Our Council on Aging provides services to almost 30% of the senior population in Acton. They do 15 exercise classes a week, and it's hard to see, but that bar chart shows that they have, in September and October, they are hovering around 200 visitors per day, which is almost four times as much, or it's substantially more than it was a few years ago. So the 30 Sudbury Building has been a great success, and the senior, Sharon and the folks at the Senior Center do a great job. We've chased all our grants to try to help do the work that we're doing here, green community grants, planning grants, the vehicle one I mentioned earlier, the solid waste programs. We've gotten some great help from our state delegation. We had $350,000 in earmarks in the state budget this year to help advance some very important projects, including the Asa Parland House and the Sports Pavilion. That's the, those are the metal roofs that I mentioned. Those were just put on over the weekend. So it's been a great partnership to get help on some important issues from our state help folks. Another thing I really want to highlight is property tax relief for seniors. This is something that was a Board of Selectmen goal last year, to try to advocate and find ways to help people better understand options available for senior tax relief. And I'm pleased to report that we almost had a 10% increase in exemptions granted last year. And we continue to do more work to try to help people understand what's available. In the budget that I'm presenting tonight, we're also increasing the benefit that seniors are able to get working in the senior work program. So we're going to continue to do that work. So when the departments got together and started working on the budget, there were a few key objectives that we asked them to meet. We wanted them to maintain services. We wanted to make sure we were consistent with the Board of Selectmen goals, the environmental sustainability policy. We wanted to find ways to address deferred maintenance and other repairs needed. We wanted to promote economic sustainability. We wanted to advance... We wanted to advance, advance work related to helping with mental health and wellness in the community. And we wanted to use the best practices for governance. So these are the goals that you adopted earlier this year: secure funding for Kelly's Corner, secure funding for the fire station, evaluate sewer feasibility, work on sustainability, communication, and other things that, a lot of these things are going to be discussed at Town Meeting next week, and a lot of them are in the budget presentation before you. Some of the longer-term goals, we're also working towards, including some intersection work in the center and Hayward and Main and Central Street, and where there's a recommendation to address the recommendation from the Water Resource Advisory Committee earlier this year. Some of the challenges that we faced in developing the budget, our Middlesex County pension assessment continues to increase at a rate higher than the revenues that we bring in. This year it was 7% for $300,000. So we had to make it work. The Minuteman High School debt service, that's something that is proposed to be excluded. If it isn't, that would present a challenge for us in the 21 budget. The special town meeting and special town election, it was sort of challenging to develop a budget with these major capital projects, sort of right in the middle of it. So we've done our best to bring forward a proposal that reflects those major investments and the impacts that those have on taxpayers. The River Street Dam is something that is a challenge. Collective bargaining, our transportation program, our award-winning transportation program, I think is a great success story, but the challenge is continuing to find ways to fund it, and we're continuing to work on that. Our reserves, I'm pleased to report, are back up to about 5% of our budget, which is where we want to be, thanks to some good work by the departments in turning back funds at the end of last year and some other closeouts. So here's the proposed budget for '21. We're proposing, which is consistent with the Finance Committee's recommendation, that the operating budget go up not more than 2.5%, and this is right in it, 2.5%. And the total spending not increase more than 3%, and we hit it right on the dot, 3%. Included in that is some capital projects which we're proposing to fund through free cash and borrowing, and I can go into more detail on that. So the North Acton Fire Station, Kelly's Corner Right-Away. We're increasing the senior tax program. We're continuing the transition of our fleet to electric. We've added two electrics last year. We're doing two to three this year, and that'll be another three cruisers next year. We have funding for design for the River Street Dam in the budget, $138,000, which is going to help offset the request to CPC, and we're also looking at grants. We're putting more funding into sidewalks and complete streets and traffic calming, which is really something we hear a lot about, is needs and concerns regarding making our streets safer. We're upgrading the public safety facility, alarm system, and dispatch center to make sure they have the best equipment available to provide emergency services. And we're going to propose to add an accessible bathroom for this meeting room. There's actually a bathroom on the other side of that wall, right there, that we're going to try to figure out a way to allow everybody to use. So stay tuned. We're also putting more funding into sustainability initiatives, funding a water resources study, continuing on pace with our OPEB. We're going to replace the roll-off truck at the transfer station, that green truck you see down below, and we're going to replace another one of our ambulances and a command vehicle for the fire department. We did receive multiple requests for new personnel, and we're not recommending any increases this year, but we're closely monitoring that, and as the funding becomes available, we hope to add staffing in the future. So this is, I think, one of the cornerstones of the budget is the investment in complete streets and pedestrian safety, the 1.3 million for Kelly's Corner Right-Away acquisitions. That's our best estimate for what it will cost to, and what we'll need to bring to Town Meeting this April to do the acquisition of the real estate on either side of the roadways to help finalize the process and then allow the state to build the $15 million worth of improvements in Kelly's Corner. We're proposing $500,000 in new sidewalks, and we're going to focus this funding on shovel-ready portions. I think it's, building sidewalks is harder than it sounds because there are multiple steps leading to when you can actually put a shovel in the ground. So the engineering and public works departments have done a lot of work throughout the community on different priority streets, and this funding will be to target the ones that are ready to go. Another $250,000 for complete streets and intersection design. We have concerns that are in the Board of Selectmen's goals about the intersection of Central Street near the train tracks, the intersection out front here, and a few other intersections that we've done some design work, and this will help further those efforts. And then traffic calming. Traffic calming can be the sign that you see there. It can be flashing, flashing feedback signs. It can be line striping. It's just funding to allow the public works department to be responsive to the concerns that we hear every week about people that are interested in finding ways to get cars to slow down and make the streets safer. So this is the River Street Dam. The property was acquired by the town a few years ago. The dam that sits on the property, the state considers it a hazard, and they said that we need to address it by the end of next year. So we completed a feasibility of what it would take to remove the dam safely, and the cost to do that is just under a million dollars, $966,000. What that $966,000 is, is its removal of the dam, its removal of the concrete building that sits on the property, its removal of the raceway that used to feed the former mill there, and it's basically prepping the entire site to be a park, making it safe, and then allowing the town to decide what it's going to look like. We're seeking state grants from the Municipal Vulnerability Program, from the Sewal Program. Both of those programs require match, which is why we're appropriating $138,000 in free cash, and we've already committed some other funds we can use towards a match, and we've also made an application to the CPC. So we hope to make significant progress on this dam removal process this year in '21. One of the goals of the board is to do more tree planting. So we held an Arbor Day event a few months ago. We're working on designation as a Tree City USA, and we are on target to hit the goal established by the board of planting 30 new trees starting in '21. Many of the, or some of the CPC projects that you saw on that list would contribute to the tree planting, as many of those include new trees. So the overall capital plan is substantial. We're proposing to borrow 1.8. That would be for the Kelly's Corner and for the sidewalk projects. There's a number of smaller capital requests included in the operating budget. We're appropriating $763,000 from free cash and about $575,000 from enterprise funds, which would cover the ambulance and a few other, and the roll-off truck and a few other items. Also on the screen, just because we can't talk about capital without talking about these major capital projects, is the North Acton Fire Station, which is $9.2 million, which will be discussed at Town Meeting next week, and the sewer project, which will also be discussed next week. We get a lot of feedback from the Finance Committee that they want a scorecard. So this is, this is our first pass at just a quick, quick hit of where we are with the things that were approved over the last two years. The railroad crossing safety improvements, if you recall, there was a train horn ban in West Acton, and we had to justify keeping it. So we did a study, and that report will be presented to the board this winter. And then our bank share program was a success. We're going to continue that going forward. North Acton Fire Station, that's going to be discussed next week. We've repurchased the equipment that we said we were going to purchase and completed the projects that we said we were going to complete. I want to introduce a new financial transparency tool. So there's a lot of people that are interested in kind of getting behind the curtains of the budget, and this, this new tool that we're publishing tonight will allow people to do that. This is a great program that our finance team and IT worked very hard to implement and get ready to go live today. It allows you to look at demographics, it allows you to look at revenues, expenditures, and you can actually put in, to give you a sense of what your investment as a taxpayer is, you can actually put in your property tax, your property's value, and it'll show you a breakdown of what you're contributing to public works, what you're contributing to public safety. So it's just another tool to help people understand that, what they're, what they're investing in and all the great services that we provide, and it just provides a new level of transparency with the budget that we're presenting. So that's, that's the budget. I look forward to working with the board and the Finance Committee and everyone else over the next few months leading up to our annual town meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank everyone who contributed. Any questions?
Yes, John, one question. So the 1.8 million, the $1.8 million in general fund borrowing would be approximately 1.3 for the Kelly's Corner land acquisitions, and then another half million dollars for sidewalks?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And just one other question. The appropriations from free cash, that's for capital projects?
Yes, so one of the goals of reducing our reliance on reserves, and one of the things that the Finance Committee really recommends is that we use reserves for capital. So with, with that 763, that would include the improvements to the dispatch center, the fire alarm and the dispatch improvements, the bathroom project here in Town Hall, the water resources study, the contribution of 138 towards the River Street Dam project, complete streets and intersections projects, and traffic calming.
Thank you.
Now, we need to open the annual town meeting warrant?
Yes, please.
I move that we open the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That's not till April. Futures act and consider resolution.
Madam Chair, I have a comment on this. We had a presentation on this before. I asked the Green Advisory Board to give us a recommendation on this. The act in here is 33 pages long. I had not had time to go through it all. We did have the presentation that I think emphasized the fact that gas companies are going to be required to fix leaks, and also, similar to the electric companies, take measures to reduce the use of gas. I, I don't know what else is in here. We have not seen a recommendation from the Green Advisory Board. I know the same People Mothers Out Front made a presentation to the GAB, but I don't feel comfortable voting on this until we get some recommendation from the Green Advisory Board about whether they support it or not.
David?
I agree with that.
How about on this side?
Agree as well.
I agree.
All right, so we'll be. Peter, you're the liaison to that committee. Do you know if they intend to take it up and if they're scheduled for?
Yeah, I was going to call Andrea today. She's the staff person that works with them. I didn't get an opportunity, but I'll do that and send an email. I can send an email to tell people what their, what their process is and when they expect to get that to us.
Okay, West Acton Sewer Project. So I, I wanted to discuss, you know, or present kind of a strategy for the sewer project and get feedback from, from the board today. So probably the single biggest area of feedback counter to the project is concerns about the cost impact for the property owners in the, in the district. And so over the past week or so, maybe a little bit more, we've been looking into legal ways of splitting the project in two. So there are two phases as part of the project. There have been two phases all along. The first phase is just to support the school. It runs the main, forced main down Mass Ave and across Brew Street to the school, and it's, it's always been in the, in the project to be done by next summer in time for the, the school project, when the, the site work gets into a full swing. And Phase Two is basically all, all the rest. If we delay Phase Two a little bit, it allows us to consider a number of different ways of reducing the betterment for the residents. So there are a number of things that we can look into, and, you know, I can't talk about, I can tell you the general areas. I can't talk about any details of whether all, any of these will come to fruition or not, and the reason is, is that we need time to be investigated and discussed, and in some cases, determined if they're legal or not. Right, because there's certain financing schemes that we might have that may not be legal under state law or things, things like that. So first is that, you know, we can look into making the extents of the project a bit bigger. That actually would, depending on which direction we go, that actually reduces the betterments for everybody. We didn't do that in the, 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 the sewer committee didn't do that this fall because some of the extensions require changes at the plant, which couldn't have been evaluated in time for this, this fall's vote in order to support, to support the schools. The second thing we can discuss is possibly different financing methods. There have been some ideas generated. At first, you know, for example, things like delaying the betterments until people actually want to hook up. Some of these things are not legal under state law, but there may be variations of these that, that we could do. In addition, we can look for grants, like Mass Works grants for the project. Those especially might have success if we change the extents of the project, or there's, there's an increased likelihood of success. And finally, we could consider having general revenue, some general revenue be part of the project. We're the only community in the Commonwealth that doesn't support our sewer projects with at least some general revenue. You know, we could choose to change that. So, but all those things need some time to investigate. We also want to be able to offer Town Meeting a choice of direction next week. So I can't tell you the exact nature of the motions right now, because I don't know, but possibly some, some motion or amendment to, to, to the Phase One now to support the school and possibly some design work for the full project, and that would be all for this, this Town Meeting, and then bringing, bringing it up again either at the annual Town Meeting or maybe next fall's special Town Meeting, depending on how long it takes to discuss and investigate those four alternatives I mentioned. And if those four alternatives, it's not necessarily one. It could be one, two, three, or four, right? So they could, they could potentially all be used or in any combination. Discussion?
Dean? If you went with the Phase One to just pick up the school, would that have to be approved at the meeting next week in order to hit the timeframe?
Yes.
And if you did that, that Forest Main is gonna go down presumably Spruce Street?
Just a correction, I'm sorry, it is next week, I'm sorry. Okay, tomorrow night is.
Yeah. The, presumably the Forest Main's gonna go down Spruce Street to access that, so would the homeowners along Spruce Street get hit with the betterments or are we just trying to pick up the school?
No, at first, plus, we do not think we'd need to do the betterments at this time, and there are a couple ways to do that. This is part of the detail that I don't know the answer to today, but there are enough alternatives that I feel it's fairly, I'm confident that it can be done. So just as one example, the South Acton Sewer Project was actually three articles over two years and it's one betterment. So I don't know the exact structure of the thing, but it should be possible to, so we do not hit anybody with betterments at this time.
Thank you.
My understanding is if we just do a Phase One with a school hookup, once we run that main, any abutting properties to the main are assessed betterments.
So there are--
So that's in our bylaw.
So there are lots of things here that I believe what I said is correct, that we do not necessarily have to hit people with betterments now, and I will be meeting with town council, I've already had conversations with town council, I'll be meeting with town council again. Again, as just an example, and this is not even the only alternative for dealing with this, is in the last sewer project, there were three articles, it was two years, the betterment only happened at the end. So, and they didn't know at the first they were gonna have three. So the betterment happens at the end of the project, whatever we say the project is, and some of the alternatives that I mentioned would require changing the sewer bylaw, which is allowed to happen. So, you know, we're getting into hypotheticals, it doesn't make sense to explore them too much because, again, I don't know what's, the exact proposal would be and even for the amendment next week. We're just trying to get this done enough, you know, quickly enough to be able to support the school with Phase One.
Okay, so just what we're focusing on then for December 10th would be the main that would allow the schools to hook up when they begin work on July 1st. That would be it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And design work for the full system.
And I'm sorry?
And design work for the full project.
That would be, how much funding would that be?
That's three quarters of the million dollars more.
Okay. When you, you know, one of the things in comments that I've heard from folks is, and it's probably a lesson that we should have learned from the 2009, 2010 Spencer tuttled Flint attempt at searing that neighborhood, is to go to the residents within the district and do a, you know, an honest survey, not a push-pull, but something that, you know, do the residents in the district want the sewers?
Possibly, but that's--
Well, not possibly.
But that's where we, I don't disagree that if we do another district that we would want to do that.
Well, not another district, I'm talking about the, you know, this particular, the West Acton District. Because, you know, if it were put on next week, you know, my judgment is, you know, it would fail and fail badly. And if we're gonna, you know, talk about, you know, revisions and adjustments to it, you know, we've really got to go back to the people and see, you know, do they really want sewers? Because in all the, you know, materials that I've read, you know, there's no case that says there's an environmental emergency, a public health emergency, a public safety emergency, you know, that would, you know, call for, you know--
John, have you attended any of the sewer forums?
I have.
And did you note that many, many people in the district support the sewers? In fact--
Okay.
You know, I'm not arguing that, you know, that we could have gathered more information in hindsight. I'm, you know, I'm, this effort actually was done, you started in a board that I was not involved in, you were involved in. You know, this project was started a year and a half ago, maybe?
It was started before that.
Well, I think this particular sewer committee was created a year and a half ago, before I was on this board.
Before I was on the board as well.
So--
Okay, but the issue is next week's meeting, that we only present Phase One?
Yes, so we'd be looking for a way to give town meeting a choice, to have either just Phase One or the whole project. They should, town meeting wished to do that. And then if they choose to do Phase One, that we would be looking for ways to reduce the betterment for people in the, the property owners in the expanded district.
Dean? I think on the face of it, I support your idea of what going with the Phase One. I think based on the feedback I've gotten, going for the whole project next week is not going to pass. But I think it's important, if we're gonna go for this Phase One, that we need to get some kind of input or decision from the schools. See, do they really need this or not? And so far, they've been rather coy in that regard, and if there's no, if the schools have got their own solution and they're gonna be happy with it and they're not gonna support us on this, then there's not much point in even doing the Phase One.
Yes, I think we put some kind of contingency in the motion to say only if the school project passes.
I'm a member of the school building committee. I think this decision is up to the entire committee, not just the schools, because it's part of the construction funds. The proposal was put in to the school building authority for matching money with the septic system, and the building committee's been holding off because it didn't make sense really to say whether we're gonna hook up to the sewers or not without town meeting approval of the project in the first place. I mean, I guess it's supposed, it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing. So the plan is to have a vote sometime in early January, and my sense is the committee, I'm not gonna make any predictions, but I think there is a possibility the committee would agree to hook up to the sewers for various advantages that they see in terms of eliminating the mounting and opening up space for more playgrounds and things and avoiding repair costs in the future, that kind of thing. But again, it's up to the committee. So if the committee decides not to hook up, the project just doesn't go forward. I mean, we don't have to spend the money or bond it or whatever, if, obviously, if the hookup is not available to us, so.
All right, so the sense of the board is to go ahead with the school portion?
Yeah, I had a couple of other quick questions if I could. I think we've gotta answer the question about whether betterments would, obviously, before town meeting, if we're gonna make this proposal, we have to have the question answered about whether betterments would be assessed for people along Spruce Street or Mas Ave who, you know, the sewer would go by. Would the design funds be proposed to be paid out of the privileged fees that have accumulated in the sewer enterprise fund?
No, this, you know, if we did this, instead of borrowing 15.2 million dollars for the whole project, we'd borrow two and a quarter million dollars for Phase One and the design.
Oh, okay, so the design would be included in the borrowing for the whole, the design for the expanded system you're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, that answers my other question. I mean, normally, the, I understand the police details, repaving the road, whatever, would be paid for out of general revenues anyway, but the actual laying of the pipe would normally be paid out of the, by the residents in the district, so this would be paid for out of general funds also as part of this borrowing, right?
Yes, plus, to a large extent, yes, but plus the avoiding cost for the schools. But initially in Phase One--
The schools will contribute 550 grand for--
Or probably a little more with their redesign.
Right.
But they'd be the sole customer for Phase One.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so do we need a motion? No, we'll just, no, okay.
When would we see the amendment?
At the town moderators. Possibly at the town moderators.
That's Wednesday night.
Yes. It's possible that the wording wouldn't be completely done then.
Would the amendment require us to meet again ahead of--
Yes.
Tuesday, the 10th?
Yeah.
Not, not the night of the meeting, but whether it's on this coming Friday or next Monday, so--
Is there a reason that the meeting, just before the meeting, is not sufficient?
I think it's a substantial issue that we're facing, that we're looking, we're amending an article, and we should fully understand what it is that we're amending and, you know, does it all work and fit? And particularly, the question I raised at the start, the sewer betterment bylaw does say that betterments are assessed to, you know, all of the properties that--
I understand that. That is not an issue from a couple of points of view, right? It could be eventually, but only could. And, you know, so when I say could, if we decided, if town meeting decided not to proceed with any sewers besides Phase One, we did, it's just for the sake of argument, we passed Phase One, and then decided not to do anything else, if we didn't want to better people, you know, and we decided that that was the end of the project, we could change the bylaw to say that.
Change the bylaw when?
We can change it after the fact. Whenever we decide that the project is over. Again, remember, take the South Acton one as an example. There were three articles over the course of two years.
Yeah.
There were one project, one betterment at the end of the third one.
John, did you have--
Just that the betterments are issued at the end of the project. Once everything's known down to the penny of what it costs to do the work, then the best, the betterment is issued, and they would be issued based on the bylaws in place at the time.
So we can change--
Okay, but the bylaw right now requires butters to pay.
Yes, but we're not ending the project right now.
But the question's gonna come up--
No, no, but I'm--
You have to be, we have--
No, I understand that I have to be prepared to answer a question, but I'll be more prepared when we decide on the nature of the, you know, the exact nature of the thing. I mean, I said today that I wasn't able to, you know, to put it, you know, give you the exact text or whatever.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the board?
Al Sineko, 76 School Street. I'd like to know if we would know at town meeting where the school committee stands because I absolutely agree that the betterment cost is the most important to people from what I've read and the people that I've spoken with. But another significant issue is the sewer use fees, and I don't know exactly which kind of system would be put into the, into the school project, but the life of a septic system, 40, 50, 60, 80 years, pumping every couple of years, that seems like it would be a lot less expensive than the sewer use fees that would have to be paid by the school. And I would want to know as a resident, since about 80% of my taxes go to support the school, I'm sure it's a very small portion of the school budget, but I'd want to know where the school committee stands on that.
So we would probably not know because they would probably not, we don't, the project doesn't exist until after the ballot vote, which is a week after town meeting, and then the school committee would probably vote on it, as Peter mentioned, but we would make this contingent on the school project passing.
The schools estimate that the sewer fees would be about 15 grand a year based on current fees for the junior high school and Parker-Davidson School.
And do we have a comparison with the septic?
Yeah, they have costs for pumping, they'd have to pump the septic system maintenance, and I'm not sure what the useful life is, but eventual replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Alva Lajnack, Heather Hill Road. So I'm just curious, as a member of the finance committee, are we gonna get a chance to see any amendment that would be put forward and a chance to discuss or deliberate or comment? Because I think coming up with a recommendation will be tough if we're only seeing that at the 23rd hour. So I know Wednesday night, a lot of folks are gonna be meeting in advance. What do you think the chances of, not necessarily the wording of the amendment, but any financial information might be coming about?
Sure, so, you know, we're doing our best to try to get it done as quickly as possible. Sometimes, of course, the amendments are offered on the floor and then the moderator gives the boards and committees a chance to huddle and decide how they want to, what they want to do.
Okay, so there's a chance this would be absent?
I would hope that we would have at least the general structure by Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Ellen Liberman, 62 Mas Ave. The microphone's not on. That's better. Ben Liberman, 62 Mas Ave. So it's clear that the sewer project currently lacks the kind of strong community consensus necessary for moving forward with big projects, and the town meeting is going to ask the residents to vote on some really big priorities for the town. A new school, a new fire station. In my view, presenting a whole bunch of vague either-or choices is going to create a high degree of uncertainty and risk at a meeting when I do not believe it's in the interest of the town to have that.
Thank you.
Nancy Waters, 622 Mas Ave. Two questions. One is sort of, of kind of a personal nature. I'm just hoping you will have figured this out by Wednesday because I'm supposed to be giving the presentation about this at the town meeting next week, and if I don't have to, then I can get some sleep this week. My question's about Powder Mill Place. My understanding is that if we were to sewer West Acton, we will not have enough capacity at the wastewater treatment plant for the Powder Mill Place affordable housing complex. Is that true? And if you just do the school and don't do the neighborhoods around it, does that make it simpler then to sewer Powder Mill Place? Thank you.
So that's a little bit of a complicated question, and perhaps Jack can also respond. Because the capacity at the wastewater treatment plant is limited by our permitted discharge, not by the actual capacity of the plant. The capacity of the plant itself, the mechanicals, if you will, can process close to half a million gallons a day, but we're permitted by the DEP to discharge 299,000 gallons a day. What that means actually is that the peak day, we can't exceed 299,000. We are generally much below there, but we have to be prepared for the, it's often the wettest day in April when we hit that peak. There are a number of ways of dealing with that, and, you know, that's one of the things
And, you know, that's one of the things to explore as, as part of this. If you remember that, you know, I said, one of the things that we, when we talked about expanding the, the extents of this district, which would lower the, the price for everybody, that there are, there are issues with how to balance the plant capacity, but there are ways to balance it without actually increasing the permitted capacity. So it's, it's a complicated question, or there may be ways of, of increasing the permitted capacity. So it, it requires more exploration and that's why we need, you know, more time for those, those things.
So you're saying you don't know if there would be room for Powder Mill Place in the system?
It, it depends on what we include and what assumptions we make about changing the plant.
So it would make it more likely we'd be able to include Powder Mill Place in the system if we didn't include West Acton or Indian Village or any of those places now?
So I, I believe, and I'll just, I can just confirm with, with Jack that in the, in the current extents of the project, we would have room for Powder Mill Place. If we expanded it, the plant would need some modification to be able to handle Powder Mill Place. But maybe Jack can...
Jack, come to the phone.
Oh, sure.
Come to the mic.
Yeah, I, I think the, the alternative of looking at both projects happening concurrently, it would be storing some of the wastewater with the equalization tank at the plant or an alternative. But the other thing to consider is, it is a matter of timing. Powder Mill could develop or could fill out quickly, but West Acton would be a series of connections over time. So we'd see that initial jump and then a gradual increase of number of connections. So when we looked at the capacity, we're looking at everybody connected in those two areas. So it wouldn't be a time crunch on day one and it would take so many years to build the project and have people begin to connect. We'd also be looking for additional discharge capacity at the plant. So it could be modifying the plant and looking for discharge capacity, but likely both of those, or we would expect those to be able to be completed before the need was there.
It seems to me from a political perspective, it would be easier to sell the betterments to Powder Mill Place because there's nobody already there. So the people who move in know that that's part of the cost when they move in.
So those are all rentals? So it's just the developer who pays?
No.
And, and that developer actually has offered to fund some improvements at the plant. So it, it, again, it's, it's, it's complicated for a lot of reasons. You, you just can't say that if we do this, can we not do that?
Thank you.
Is there one more?
So Yan Wang, 211 Arlington Street. So the initial information we got from that sewer committee is very misleading because I don't know whether I need to pay at a time, but after I, I do more study, like I do see I need to pay a lot as a homeowner. So like I would strongly suggest the sewer committee can talk to all the residents who are affected by the, by the proposed sewer project, listen to them, whether they can afford to the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Lauren?
I do hope you support Selectman Martin to present in this way. I think one of the things that's been wonderful is that West Acton Village has developed in a very positive way for a lot of people in town. And, you know, I think that residents might be willing to put forth a little bit more too, because everybody uses the village. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board?
So your next meeting is tomorrow night before Town Meeting and then there's another meeting Wednesday night, which is also the moderators' meeting. And then the following night, the next meeting is before special Town Meeting.
Right.
So run that again.
So we're meeting tomorrow at 6:30 and then the next day at 6:30.
And that meeting is here?
The moderators' meeting is here, yes. And then the following Tuesday, we'll be meeting before the special at 6:30 as well.
What room tomorrow night at the high school?
Room 123. Sorry?
123 North.
123 North.
Okay.
You've already posted the Wednesday night meeting, I assume, right?
Yes.
If, is there any way, if we wanted to meet after that, to discuss the sewer project, that we could add that to the agenda?
Was today Monday? I think so. I think one of the, the, the agenda itself says participate in the moderators' meeting, right? And part of the moderators' meeting is to discuss this article.
Okay. So we might be able to, if we think that's a good idea.
So is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.